All right, we have a quorum in the full house. Everybody stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome nice our guest tonight. So thank you for joining us. That's right, exactly. Everybody tuning in from home, thank you for taking the time to join us. Any public comments? You sure? You got a captive audience, so. All right. Correspondents, how do they do their city?
Um, did it with the state letter? The ISP findings, it was in the packet. It was just the report from the ISB visit.
Move right on to our consent agenda. Mr. Grody, if you'd be so kind to walk us through that.
Yeah, you've got your reports and minutes to approve. We have a resignation Doug Van Haas halftime high school track coach is stepping down. We're going to need to fill that position. We do have a leave of absence and we have an extracurricular Sarah Klein is going to be our, or we're recommending, hopefully you'll vote for it, the middle school assistant track coach. Posting then for the halftime high school track coach that we are losing with Mr. Van Haas's resignation. Administration recommends the board approve the consent agenda as presented. Very short this time.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Here you know, maybe like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Andrea, where second?
My second.
Lisa seconds, roll call please.
Noreen Friedrich?
Yes.
Adam Hempen? Andrew Corey? Kelly Moyer? Greg Meyer? Lisa Schumacher? Tyson Search?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to our communications and reports. The enrollment is in your packet. And then we'll start with our assistant superintendent report.
So I want to start out with a few shout outs for our staff. And so starting at the high school, I want to give a shout out to Amanda McKee. Kind of my theme you'll see for this month is it's not always those big things that matter. It's the small things that matter. And so Amanda is one of our high school math teachers. And I was in her classroom one day and to watch her lesson and to see the different modes of engagement she used with her students. They were doing verbal responses. She was doing modeling at the board, then they got out whiteboards and were doing activities. To watch a group of high school students be engaged for an entire math lesson and see the validity of why they were doing it is huge, right? Math is not always everyone's favorite subject. And it also, when you start talking about high school students and making sure to keep them engaged is sometimes a difficult task. So she did an excellent job with that. The next picture of the students in the cafeteria. My shout out for this month is Michelle Breeding, who is one of our cafeteria workers at the middle school. If you remember last year, we did the survey with the students and we did the tasting menu where they got to pick different items. But Michelle Breeding then saw that there was a need for some more options for the middle school students other than just what came out from that tasting menu. And so she took the time to talk to students, listen to what they had to say. And she actually brought the walking tacos to the middle school. And it was a huge success to the fact that not only did they run out of chips and had to start borrowing bags of chips from the other buildings, but they, once they borrowed from the other buildings, they still ran out of chips the first time they sold it. So it was an overwhelming success. And that was because of Michelle's dedication to getting our kids what they wanted to eat during a school lunch. The, the next one down below where it shows the classroom number is just a sign. I was walking around the building, doing some classroom visits. And I happened to come across Lynn Webb's classroom here at Parkview. And all of the classrooms were doing their map benchmark testing for the middle of the year. And so our sign just says, we are acing the map test. And it's just those small subliminal messages, right? A lot of the signs said, we're testing or, you know, please be quiet as we take the test. But just switching it to that, putting in the kid's mind that we're acing it because we're showing everything that we know is a huge subliminal message. And it literally was just a sign that she chose to hang outside of her classroom. So just wanted to give Lynn a shout out for that. And then the last one is a picture of Vicky Biffer, who is at Eagle View. She's one of our first grade teachers. And I was filling in for Erica last week as the principal in the building. And so was able to sit in in an IEP meeting. And to listen to Vicky talk to the parents, you know, to go into an IEP meeting, you already know your student has challenges at school. And so a lot of times they just tend to pile that on. Here's all the things your student can't do. And we also, I think we've talked about even in our board meetings about how we use a lot of acronyms in education, right? We don't always stop to make sure that everyone knows what that means. And Vicky did an excellent job of not only celebrating what this child did really well in the classroom, but then made sure that the entire way through the conversation, that the parents understood exactly what we were talking about, made sure that they had plenty of opportunity for questions or to add in their own insight. And it was just nice to get that small little thing, but realizing that it takes a village to educate a student. And she did a fantastic job of including those parents into it. So again, just a small recognition of a lot of the outstanding teachers that we, and you know, staff members that we do have in the district. The next one I want to give a shout out to is to another one of our high school math teachers, Wendy Stevens, who actually just received her national board certification. It is an extremely intense and long process to go through to earn your national board certification. So it's kind of a step above just receiving your traditional Illinois state certification. You have to not only do different activities along the way provided, but you have to videotape your lessons. You send them in, they're critiqued by a panel of different teachers that look at what you're doing and all of that. So to have a teacher on our staff that is, you know, nationally board certified now is a huge accomplishment, but a huge benefit to our students in the district. So just wanted to give her a shout out and celebrate her as well. And then to just kind of give you an update on district news, kind of looking forward to what's going on. I'm working currently on setting up a lot of administrative training. So I've talked to you a lot about teacher professional development that we do, but we can't forget our administrators need professional development as well. So we are doing a lot of different trainings on handling discipline and alternative ways to teaching students, right? We talk about when a student doesn't know their math facts, right? We don't punish them and send them home with detention or anything like that, right? We teach them and we figure out how to approach them. Well, when a student can't behave, we shouldn't just punish them and send them home. We need to help teach them how to behave. So doing some trainings on discipline and bullying and how to tackle those. We are still continuing with our teacher trainings. When we come back in January, we're going to do a lot of training that will kind of roll over from month to month on our half days, looking at our focus standards, classroom instruction and assessment. In this next semester, we're doing a curriculum review for science. It's time for us to look at our science curriculum and is it meeting our needs? And where do we need to make changes from K through 12 with that? We'll be mapping out our middle school English curriculum. I've talked to you earlier this year about we were doing a pilot at the middle school with some curriculum. You know, kind of looking at what it offers. We are realizing that it's not meeting the true needs, but that's difficult when you buy a canned curriculum of what there is. But we also know that there is a need to ensure that our students are receiving a robust and a rigorous curriculum. So we are going to be working with the teachers this next semester on getting that realigned. And then we're working on some updating some teacher evaluations, some different options that they can do. A lot of times we tend to start seeing teacher evaluations as just another hoop to jump through or a box to check off. And if teachers and administrators are going to spend their time and invest their time into that, we might as well make it worthwhile for everyone involved. So we're looking at making some changes to how that works and doing some trainings for the administrators as well to make their evaluations much more efficient and needed. And then we are going to also in this next semester, do some vertical alignment for our art curriculum. So getting our second through 12th grade art teachers, those three teachers together and to be able to look at, can we align what we're doing, make sure we're not overlapping projects and that we're meeting the students' needs there. So a lot is going to be happening in the second semester. And then really the last thing I just wanted to throw out is just really more so to anyone, including especially the public that might know of people, we do still have a cook position that is open, that hasn't been filled, that is extremely important. You know, I talked about Michelle and how important her job was. She needs some help and support to get that done. So we do have a cook position still open. We also have a para position that is still open. So if anyone's open in or interested in a full time position. But we also need subs desperately in every category. Teacher subs, para subs, custodial, secretary, cook, like you name it, we need subs. So anybody that, you know, has a flexible work schedule that thinks, well, I can only offer one day a week. We will take you one day a week. All you need to do is contact Kim at the district office and she can get you set up with what that is. So I just wanted to throw out an extra, you know, kind of acknowledgement or a reminder to everyone that we are looking for those spots. And that's all I have.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
All right, and on to our superintendent's report.
All right. Last month, we were asked about the eclipse. We sent out a survey. 625 families responded to the survey. 10% of those families that responded would have issues with childcare if we would close on that day. They'd have to figure it out. So whenever you adjust a schedule, you've got to, you've got to think about those things. 64% of the faculty and staff that responded, we only had 119 of them that responded, but 64% of them, they do not want to add a day to the end of the calendar. And cutting that day would add a day to the end of the calendar. Of the 36%, 64% don't want to add the day, there were 36% of those people that were willing to extend the calendar. Of that 36%, 15 of them would also like to use a personal day. So some of the people that wanted to extend the calendar were like, yeah, I'm fine. We could have the day off, extend the calendar, that's good. But no, I don't need a personal day that day, you know? 15 of them said we would. So in my mind, those 15 are the ones that are vested in getting the day off. At this point, I think that we should try to figure out how to get the subs so that those that are going are going. But I wouldn't change the calendar or do that. I mean, you guys can add it to an agenda item if you want to. But my recommendation was don't change it. 10% of the community is going to have issues with childcare. And I'd like to think that the 15 people, we'd be able to figure it out and cover it. But as we're always trying to thread the needle and do what we can for them and do what we can for this. This is, the calendar was set and so I just wouldn't adjust it yet. The second thing I want to talk about is strategic planning. And listening to Alyssa, it's that timing. It's, you know, we've got a lot of things going on. We've got the foundational things in the district to a point though, where I think that strategic planning might be a good time. We've got all of the roofs covered and all of the tuck pointing done on the buildings. So our buildings, facilities are looking good. We've got the big project at the high school going, which is a wonderful, wonderful thing for us. Curricular, we got textbook adoptions going. We've got alignment with our specials and stuff like that happening. We've also got operational stuff. We've changed over our financial software. We're getting new updated student softwares. So all of those key foundational things that an organization like a school district need to evolve, we've all done those, those things. And so at this point, strategic planning would be our next place where we look at them and say, you know, there's, there's typical areas like you would want to do student success, thriving workforce or workforce excellence. You know, how well do we prepare kids for the workforce or for college? Self supportive school climates or future growth and aspirations. Family committee, community engagement, effective, efficient and effective operations. You know, how do we serve the community? What do people think about? And you can get goals. I bring this up because there's this company called Thought Exchange that has a really neat tool for surveying the community. It does come at a cost, but it also comes with advisors on how to do this. Just to get the, the thing ahead, it's about 24,000 for a year. If we do it this year, the sales guy can drop it down to 21,744. That's based on a 2,000 student population. So we give them our actual numbers and that would be what it is. For 21,000, we could start it in January and go. What's neat about this program is, is it allows you to ask very open ended questions on those specific areas. So the survey, the parents can then write in a one sentence. I think that they do this really well. It then has you with a Likert scale, rank other people's comments, like in student success. I think the high school does a great job with the science program, you know? How many other people then, when you answer what you think with that qualitative, it that quantitatively starts throwing you other ideas? And you get to say whether, how strongly you agree or disagree with those ideas. And so what happens is, is as we're, is they were doing the presentation and showing it to me. They say that you walk into the room with an idea, oh, we need to do this. But then when you see other people's ideas and you start judging it, you walk away with a kind of a deeper view or another idea. It also has AI components on the end of it. So if you wanted to, you could have AI write up a nice little summary of the findings of this report. It really is a neat program. 24,000 or 21,700 if we do it this year would be expensive. It's not a cheap program, but I've looked at other schools that have used it and I think it would be worth the investment. So I'm not asking for an action item here. It is within the limits of what I could do as far as purchasing it. It would then go to the strategic planning and we'd be able to engage. And you'd be able to send it out like a survey just to the faculty and staff. You could send out a survey just to the families. You could send out the survey to the community. You could have it on the website and say, all business owners, please, you know, you go to the chamber. You say, please fill out this survey and you get the feedback from that. So think about that. I've got a week to get back to the sales guy as to whether or not we want to engage now or we want to engage later. No pressure.
No pressure.
It's a $3,000 savings. I like to save $3,000. However, I don't want to buy something that might not be the right time to use either. Cause buying something and then not using it's no good either, so.
Can I ask some questions?
Certainly.
All right, so who's going to compile all this data and go through? It sounds like a lot of work.
The compilation of the data, they actually have a coordinator that they assign to work with you. And so they help you create the surveys because they've done strategic planning in other districts. And then the, the metrics on the other side, it prints out reports and they would help you massage those. What would happen then is, is with those reports and the responses, you guys, the board would need to sit back, find some time, we would need to schedule a weekend, maybe a couple hour retreat, go over that and set goals. And again, we've got a lot of things going on right now with the high school expansion, with the textbook adoptions, with a lot of the foundational stuff. If we're not going to do it this year, you'll probably hear me next year pushing a little harder for it, but.
Have you talked to any school districts that's used this?
Not this tool specifically, no.
Other questions? So you only mentioned a few of the areas. Is it open for other areas? Like, could we use it for finding out the opinions about the facilities and?
Yeah, absolutely. The areas I picked, I went online and I looked at a bunch of school district strategic plans and they're all rather similar. You know, the, the problem is, is that you know, you're going to be talking about student success. You know, you're going to be talking about workforce and post school. You know, you're going to look at the facilities, you're going to look at the financial, you're going to look at a lot of those areas. The goals that you then set is where the, the responses to the survey guide you. But the areas are all, sky's the limit. Cause you can, whatever you find important.
I did a little research on this afternoon. So the, the option is unlimited surveys that you want to do?
Yeah.
Is that the one?
Yeah, because I think for the first year, the first year that we do it, be it whether we do it in January, July, or we do it next January. The first year you use it, you want to be able to survey everybody. I mean, you could send it out to the band parents, you know, with Skyward grouping kids. You could send it out to the people that ride buses.
That's my last question. So how, where do these lists come from? Do we have to supply the list for these surveys? So do we have to have a list of the parents or do we have to have a list of?
It would come through our, our emails, yes.
So we're responsible for creating the list, all right.
Most of the families and community members we have in our, in our account. I'd have to go to the Chamber of Commerce and get what their email list is. So there's a lot of ways to do it. The post office typically has an option where you can mail out flyers to everybody in the zip code.
Right.
Is it a one time fee or is there a fee every single year?
Every year, every year. And they say that it usually goes up around three to 4% every year, so.
Love the idea, hate the cost.
Yeah. That's why we're discussing it, so.
Trying to figure out why you would do it more than one year. I mean, if you're doing strategic planning, you don't, we wouldn't typically do that every year anyway. I mean, you know, that's kind of like an every five or 10 year thing probably. To go out for that much information. I mean, you want to update your strategic plan more frequently, but I wouldn't think that you would need to do that level of digging to figure out what your priorities would be for the strategic plan if you had recently done an overhaul.
Yeah, I guess I'd, I'd need to do a little more thinking about, once you do the plan, you've got your goals set. How do you measure the goals? Do you go back with another survey or are they more concrete goals? Like we're going to do this, you know? Are we, is one of the goals to, you know, build support? Cause to, to, to see if you've accomplished a goal, you might need a survey to do it, is I guess my point.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to pay a survey company.
To do that.
To do a pointed success survey.
So you're seeing this is a one, one time shot and?
Yeah, I mean, I, with, with the cost of it. I mean, I just can't see the value of doing follow ups at this price. But you know, in a, the entire landscape changed after COVID and returning. Trying to figure out what people's priorities are now may not be the same as they were five years ago, 10 years ago.
When we talked about trying to maximize that cost for that year. So in the past, we've done exit interviews when staff members are leaving the district. I sit down and interview them, why are you leaving? And when we were in Chicago, one of the sessions I sat in was about building staff culture. And it talked about really, you shouldn't be doing exit interviews. You should be doing stay interviews. And so when you first start those, right? It's hard to have people to have trust in what are you really doing with this data? And so we talked about, well, this might be a good way that first year to get more people to anonymously share their thoughts until they kind of build the trust and see what we're going to do with this information. And then slowly turn it into something else. But I think like to Adam's point that kind of a one year thing, but let's use it for more than just strategic planning. We're going to spend that kind of money.
This is kind of a last minute thing and, and you know, it is a $3,000 discount. But it, again, at the price point it is, I, I think maybe we need to have more time and more thought on it before we move forward.
And I'm sorry, Greg asked this question. I don't know if I just didn't hear it or what, but your answer as far as who's, I know you asked who's going to compile the information. But who's going to then be processing the information, looking at it, maintaining all of the, you know, the surveys, the stats, the everything else? So that if, even if we were to do this within that first year, we know that what we're paying for is actually somebody's using it. Cause I'm just one of those people, like I'm very, and I'll be honest, like I'll, like, oh, this sounds great. I'll buy it, I'll do it. And then, you know, like if you don't have somebody executing it. So I guess that would be my question too, is who's, who are going to be the people that would actually execute the outcomes? So that we're, what we're paying for is actually getting utilized.
Yeah, and, and that would be where the administrative team, the development of the plan and the goal setting would be the board. Once those goals are set, then the administrative team would have to come up with, how are we going to implement the changes that we're working toward? And then it would be a matter of then coming back and reporting to you all that we're actually making the changes. So it'd be kind of layered. All right. That's all I had for the. Oh, we are going to have a very brief closed session. There's no action item after.
Do you want a consensus from the board? Are you happy the way it stands or?
With this? I'm happy with what way it stands. I think I, we'll wait is the read that I'm taking. If I'm reading that wrong.
That's the way I'm reading the room as well. All right. Just don't want to assume anything, that's all.
That's fine, we got plenty to do, so.
I, I think that's. I think you can always ask for a 10% discount.
Yeah.
I think you can always ask for a 10% discount.
Yeah, something.
That's not enough carrot to, to make me want to jump quickly into stuff.
I agree.
Works for me.
Perfect. And that's not saying that we can't do this on our own also, if you want to do a survey. If, if we're coming up with the data or the, or the lists, we can do a Survey Monkey for.
Yeah, what I liked about it was the qualitative aspect where people are able to write down a sentence and then other people can agree or disagree with that sentence.
Maybe we should, does it have to be an educator specific survey company? I mean. Correct. It's probably a good starting point. Yeah. Great conversation though.
Okay.
All right.
I mean, it sounds like a great program, just, yeah, money.
Well, with the high school project and that sort of thing, it's bad timing, I think it's though. All right. Move on for items of action. The first is everybody's favorite, the approval of the tax levy for the year 2023.
Yeah, and we presented that last month. It's, numbers are the same. Administration recommends the board approves this. I need to get the signed levy to St. Clair and to Monroe before the end of this year. So I'm hoping you approve tonight so that I can deliver it to St. Clair tomorrow and Tuesday for Monroe, so.
Perfect. Questions, discussions, comments? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the tax levy for the years 2023? The year 2023, excuse me.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Andrea, where second?
I'll second.
Tyson seconds, thank you. Roll call please.
Adam Hempen?
Yes.
Andrew Corey? Kelly Moyer? Greg Meyer? Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Search?
Yes.
Noreen Friedrich?
Perfect, thank you all for that. Item B is the approval of our early graduates.
And you have a list of individuals who have gotten their credits so that they can graduate. They will be invited back to walk the stage should they choose. They're not forced to, but the recommendation here is to approve their early graduates. There's a lot of people that end up getting jobs before they go off to college and it's beneficial, so.
Questions, comments, concerns? How about a motion to approve our early? I have a question. So the, when the, if the students do the early graduate, if they graduate early, are they still allowed to do any of the extracurriculars later in the year?
Like prom?
Like, yeah, like?
They can do prom, they can do graduation, but not like student council or that kind of. So it's like the clubs and the sports kind of things, no. But the like prom graduation, they are.
It's an interesting question. I would imagine when they choose to graduate early, they are informed of the things that they'd be opting out of or not, so.
So just out of curiosity, why is that? Like what, is, is that a state thing? Is that a district thing as far as, I mean?
Why aren't they involved in our clubs anymore?
Yeah.
Cause they're not our student anymore. Coming back to prom and whatnot, it's, yeah. And so, you know, the clubs are the more day to day things. Prom is a, you know, if you're sitting there saying, well, I don't want to be an early graduate because I want to go to prom. You know, that's a one time event and odds are you're going with somebody that's still a student. But as far as the day to day clubs and whatnot.
Is that the same or is that different than students that, I don't know what the right word is. Affiliate, like not affiliates, but that, you know, like SIUE or, you know, like SWIC, they do some SWIC classes or something like that. Is that, is that similar?
The startup, the startup students, yeah.
That's what it is.
Where the students go and they go to the startup. They do not participate in our clubs. They can do it if it's outside of the school day, is I believe the. So the startup, the startup students, yeah.
The startup program, that's, that's what it is.
Where the students go and they go to the startup, they do not participate in our clubs, they can do it if it's outside of the school day, is, I believe the.
Yeah, our running start students can participate.
Yeah, not startups, running start.
Yeah, that's it. Yes, yes. So the clubs that are outside of the school day, um, we've made a couple of changes to kind of help benefit in the past, like they hadn't been eligible for National Honor Society.
Right.
But those students are taking extremely rigorous courses.
Yes.
So that is something that is changing in our policy for next year, that those students will be eligible for National Honor Society. They are eligible for prom and graduation, uh, but yeah, not the, the day-to-day clubs that meet during homeroom. I think, and that, that was one of the things I've heard in the past, was, you know, they're taking these, like you said, rigorous classes that are very advanced and kind of getting knocked, I guess, for not being recognized as national, you know, honor society, so.
But that's the running start, that's not the early graduates.
Right, right, yes. So that's, that's what I was trying to differentiate and understand the difference.
It's just, if there's any early graduates on the TV, they are going to vote for it.
We'll get there, we will circle back.
Right, thank you for that right now.
That's the most discussion we've had on item.
Anyway, we would recommend the early graduates and they would be able to go to prom in that other clubs.
Sorry, Adam.
No, no, that's, I, there, there are all things that I've been wondering, so it's, you know, the extracurriculars and all that, so it's just, just prom and graduation. If they want to walk in the spring, which is the traditional one, they'll get their diplomas. Do they get their diplomas now, or do they get it in May?
I honestly don't know.
I believe it's May.
Don't they get it in May?
I got mine when I graduated, I graduated early, and I got it when I.
Oh, did?
I think that's.
I mean, if they're no longer a student, why would we hold their diplomas?
Yeah, no, they, I mean, it's just a matter of whether or not they're printed, I don't know, so.
They are.
They are, okay. There you go.
Okay.
See, I'm learning new things too.
How about a motion to approve our early graduates?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Adam. I was hoping you might.
I'll second.
All in seconds, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything opposed? Any abstentions? That all passes. Moving along, we have our approval for our intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the city of Columbia.
And I've. Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
For the instruction of emergency medical responder course.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that this one passes too, because um, Tuesday or Wednesday, what day are you meeting with this?
I'm meeting with her on the 28th.
Oh, you're meeting with her on the 28th to show her her room and get her.
Wow, I mean, we should just not approve it right now, just because you're doing all this.
That would be a cruel and somewhat humorous joke, but this is a good program, and I think that this, we got a lot of kids. And again, the, the goal is to um add another class so that they can graduate and become emergency medical technicians.
Oh, no, I think it's a, I think it's a great course.
And in the future, we want to expand it to the EMT.
We actually talked about this a few years ago.
When they graduate, they'll be eligible to be higher.
Kind of touched base about it.
As EMTs.
That's great.
Yeah, I think it's.
And it's a dual credit, so the students in the EMR class will be earning dual credit through SWIC.
Nice.
Great idea.
Alright, so administration recommends that the board approve that, intergovernmental agreement with the city.
Any questions on this one?
I think we actually talked about this one during our dual credit discussion this summer.
Perfect. Alright, anybody like to make a motion to approve our intermental, intergovernmental cooperation agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Lisa, second?
I'll second.
Who's second? Oh, Andrew, thank you. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything opposed? Any abstentions? Perfect. Next item is our second reading of approve, an approval of the board policies, press issue 113.
Yeah, and I sent you all kind of a summary recap of it, um, there were some of the areas like um, here's one, the, the building, the bidding threshold is being recommended that it moves to 35,000, it's changed from 25,000, um. That was one that I know that we have discussed previously, and so I didn't know where you guys were on that one. And then the leave of absence of the employees, uh, 250 employees, so I mean, I answered most of the questions. If there weren't any questions or comments on that, I would say prove it as presented, that would be the higher threshold for the bidding. Tell me if you'd like that changed.
Was it problems last year, huh?
I don't, I don't know that I saw that the, there was a, there was an update because the Illinois code changed. I don't know that that, that that is actually up for question of whether we want to go from 25 to 35. I think this is just a policy update to align with the Illinois code change.
It is.
So we're not, we're not deciding whether we want to increase or not.
Yeah, that's just for the Illinois, right?
We can make a stricter, but not broader, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We can, we can wind it down if we want to, we just can't say we're going to do 40 or whatever instead.
Right.
But we can do 25 if you want to do that.
The number hasn't changed for a very long time, so the recommendation is to allow it to change, because.
So I had a couple of additional notes or things, I guess, just to bring some for, just for awareness. Like 220, uh, that, which affects us as the board as to how we do it. It did outline how we, how we, or when we are allowed to attend virtually, and it's basically if we're sick, if there's employment or school business functions that take us away, family or other emergencies or unexpected childcare obligations. So they've changed that since we're no longer under an emergency status. Those are the authorized reasons for virtual, virtual board meeting attendance, just a highlight I have there. And I think the only other one was on 760, and I think your recommendation was no is the default. This one is about accepting district employees' children, if they're non-residents, to attend for no tuition fee basis.
Yeah.
So that one.
And the no is the default.
No is the default, that, that's one that I, I would actually like to have some discussion on, because I actually think that, why, why wouldn't we want to allow our teachers to bring their kids here, but I, I just, I know other, some districts do it, some districts don't. I mean, I know we have quite a few that live outside the district that have school-aged children, I don't, I don't know.
The one thing I would say that has changed, this has always been a possibility for districts. And back when you were paid by the number of kids, um, there's an advantage to trying to increase the kids. So a lot of communities would allow their, their teachers that lived outside of the district to bring the kids in because you got more funding for that. Evidence-based funding has changed a little bit, so that we don't see any benefit from adding to the kids. Right now, um, our classrooms are pretty full, we are, you know, and so we don't know how many would come in. If you do this, you would be taking all of them, there, you know, it's not like, well, we'll take Mrs. Corey's children while she, but not Mr. Meyer's, you know, it's a, it's an all or none thing. Um, I, I could go either way with it. The, the big perk I think that we would want to think about is, would this make people want to apply here? Because as a Columbia teacher, and my kid could come to Columbia, that might get us some applicants.
I would just piggyback on what Adam said, is that I feel like in the past, we've lost teachers because they were able to go to the district where their children went to school, and it's more convenient for them. We, we've lost some long-term teachers.
Waterloo grain some from us?
Yes. So we've lost some long-term teachers that have been able to go where their kids go to school. And so I, I, I really think that that would be an advantage for anybody applying here, to be able to bring their kids to go to school here with them. It, it cuts down on childcare costs, it cuts down a lot of things that are logistics and just in general, so. I, I would not be opposed to that at all.
There's a consensus on the board that board policy, um, 7.60 under residents, it asks, do you wish to accept requests from district employees for their non-resident children to attend in a tuition-free basis? No is the default, we, I've, I've heard two people say yes, that they would, they would think that that's a, a, a good idea, we can change that to yes.
Tuition-free?
Yeah, it would be tuition-free.
I agree. I think it would be a benefit.
I don't, I mean, I, I get like the tuition-free thing, like, could be opening up a can, but I don't think there's, there's going to be enough that it would.
Several won't pull their kids from the school.
Right.
And to bring them here now, but it would be enticing for new teachers coming in.
Or maybe you would. Well, I'm saying, like, not everybody would, but some would.
We could do a survey.
I mean, that's probably.
We love surveys. Let's do so.
I like the idea a lot, but I'm having a hard time making the decision without knowing what the consequences are. So in other words, if we're going to bring in a hundred kids and it's going to upset the apple cart on the whole deal, we have to know what we're getting into, in my opinion. I, again, I like the idea, but.
Well, I think a survey would be good, like, to see how many, how many staff actually have kids that age, like, school age, that they would even want to bring them here. And then if you, I mean, and then we can, the math people, which is not me, can do the math and kind of figure out, like, you know, tuition-free, what is that costing? What, what, I mean, I think that there probably needs to be a little bit more digging, but I absolutely, I think it would be beneficial. I don't think that, I think if somebody's going to work for our school district and they're going to, that they should have some sort of benefit to doing that and, and letting their kids come and like everything that Andrea said, I, I, I'm fully on board with that. I, I think the rest of it would be like, not because of me necessarily, but because of backlash that we could get from.
So what I'm hearing you all say is we can approve the policies as presented, and we will table specifically board policy 760, and we will update that next month in January, and I will send out a survey to the faculty and staff and see who would be interested in possibly bringing their kids here, we'd have harder numbers and whatnot, and I could um do some digging into.
This would just be teachers, alright? Is this just teachers?
No, it'd be faculty and staff.
Faculty and staff.
All faculty, all staff.
Which, I mean, it could then help us get more people that want to come and work here. I mean, I don't know, you know, I mean, like, that could be a huge benefit, where we could maybe get some great, you know, additional, I mean, obviously, we're, there, we have a lineup of people that we're looking for, for stuff, so.
Most kids are going to want to stay, I think, in their community that they grew up in.
I guess it just depends on the age.
Yes.
Like, the age, like, if you're starting off young, you're starting off with little ones, then you might just want to be like, hey, let's, like, let's do this, so. I don't know, we'll just, I think a survey is a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can't.
How much is the tuition for non-residents?
Right now, we don't accept tuition for non-residents.
Yeah, we don't have it.
There is a calculation, I'd have to look it up, it, it is your operating, yeah, it's probably in the. You'd have to look at your annual financial report.
And, okay.
But there's a calculation in your annual financial reports, and I'd have to dig it up, but it's.
Well, the only reason that I really ask that is whenever you're looking at the total compensation package calculation, I know on the, on the federal government side. If that, if this was, if something that was offered to a teacher on the federal level, then that would be something they would consider of, okay, there's a benefit that you're getting as a non-resident, so you can take your kids there, and here's the, here's the stated value, you know, as to, and there's no real backend to it, um, but it's good to know, you know, where those dollars are and, you know, if the school is actually attributing some, what would have been $7,000 to, you know, to a position, you know, just to keep track of the numbers, for people that are numbers people like myself. Even if there's nothing on the backend, it helps you at least.
I don't believe that.
What?
I don't believe that you're not a numbers person. I feel like you're like engineer guy, so don't, no. I was like, no, no.
The recommendation is to approve the policies, tabling 760, I will do a survey, and I will um look at the AFR and get you the tuition costs.
I don't think we necessarily need to table 260 or 270, uh, we can approve it the way it is, we can always amend it at our next meeting, that way everything's clean, because if we table it, then we have a, then we have an item that's up in the air.
Okay.
And could be ambiguous, that's my recommendation, but.
So, so we have that option of changing our policy anytime?
We change it anytime.
You'd need to go through two readings, so I would, I would, we'd have to do January and then February.
January, February, yeah.
Where I, I think in tabling it, you could say we've done one reading, a second reading, and then be able to do it in January.
Why would we not table it then?
That's fine.
Right.
Let's table it then.
That's fine. Actually, I guess the policy would continue as written until.
As written until, yeah.
Okay, that's true.
So I'll make the recommendation, give tabling 760.
And?
I second.
And approve the rest.
I'll second it.
One second. Roll call please.
Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Kelly Moyer?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Searge?
Yes.
Maureen Krieger?
Yes.
Adam Hemken?
Yes.
That passes. That concludes our items for action, our next is our discussion items, we'll start with our facility study.
Yeah, this is an update you have at your desk, a schematic design narrative. Adam spent a day out here going through copious amounts of plans and circling and highlighting everything. We've then gave that to the architects, and they've acknowledged all of it. The schematic design is the first phase, then you get the um document, what, what is the DD? There's SD, DD, and then CD, the DD is the development design, where they go into more. At this point, what we're approving is the fact that we are going to be adding an auditorium, an administrative office area, a front wing, and a gymnasium with remodelings of the others. It's kind of the footprint that we are agreeing to, um, in very broad strokes. The details have been discussed and are being pushed through, do you want to add something to that, Mr. Hemken?
Well, the details for the front wing, the administrative area, the auditorium, and then some of the renovation of the existing space. The details of the gymnasium have not been right laid out, so that's really a broad, here's, conceptually, we want a competition gym, we want some locker rooms and four or five rooms above it, um, but that's about the level of detail that's gone into that. But the rest of it, we've had pretty detailed conversations, looking at size and flow and restrooms and pretty much all the, all the stuff we need to get, get moving, uh, to get those types of things, everything except for the auditorium space, to where they can start, start preparing to go out for bid, and getting the engineers, I know they were in on Wednesday, yesterday?
It was yesterday, 1:00 to around 4:15, they were popping ceiling tiles and um finding details like the uh, the, the classrooms that are behind the auditorium area, they were going to kick out the walls, so the band room had a little more room, but they found that the wall there is a load-bearing wall, and so the extra few feet probably is not going to happen, because that would just, it's one of those things where those extra feet wouldn't be worth the cantilevers and all the other physics. Yeah, and so um they were in there and it, like, we were also in the media center and finding out where the pillars will be, because right now the media center will be part of the cafeteria, as the media center becomes where the office area is, because the new office area is being built, but that, that space is going to have some poles, because something's got to hold up the roof. And so they were identifying where all those things are, but that's.
So all, all the code compliance, they've been going, that's part of this phase, going through, making sure we have adequate restrooms. We've had numerous discussions about having, whether you call them family restrooms, single-person restrooms, unisex restrooms, whatever you want to label them as, um, you know, we're looking at making sure we have more of those in the school, as well as in the auditorium area for when we have events, um, that it could handle it, looking at even being able to lock off areas to where when there is something in the auditorium, people cannot get to the rest of the building, right, right now, we put up a sign that says, please do not enter this area. There are doors, but, you know, there's 50 feet before the door, um, you know, so things like that, just the, the flow, all the safety items. So all of those things have been discussed in pretty, pretty lengthy detail, and then that's what the engineers were here for on, were here for yesterday, for numerous hours, looking to make sure that some of the assumptions about, well, what do we have for cable trays, what do we have, where does the plumbing run, how many, actually, how many things are here, where, where's our fiber come in, that's still a question. You know, some of that stuff, uh, they're, they're really ironing out the details, that's where we're at now, so that's kind of post, that's moving into the second phase, so.
One of the, the points that was um discussed on Wednesday, there is going to be an elevator at the end of the west wing. Currently, the second floor of that wing is not ADA accessible, because the second floor of the east wing and the second floor of the west wing don't connect. And there's an elevator on this side, but there's no elevator on this side, and so there was a lot of discussions of, why can't we get the second floor above the, what we're building to connect to that, so that people could. why can't we get the second floor above the, what we're building to connect to that, so that people could just walk, because there's if we're adding this many number of students, the flow and how the people walk and the stairs and everything, it, it, it is just, it's the roof line and, um, and the fact that the hallway, you'd need to have a ramp up and go over the, the, the roof, it's, it's.
Elevations don't work.
Yeah, the elevations don't work, and the roof line doesn't work, so there's just no way to connect. So you're gonna need to add another elevator, which.
And the structure's not there to put a second, second level on it.
Yes.
So, it just, every, at every turn, the answer was, it's just not practical.
Yeah.
Practicable. So, yeah, we, we tried, but it just didn't make sense. So. We'll add an elevator.
Yeah.
Even if we did add, connect them, we would need to add an elevator anyway, because the distance to the nearest elevator would have been too far, so. Whether ADA says yes or no, I, I still think that that would have been a bad design.
So, um, we're gonna be approving the schematic design and then the the next stage is where they really get the the, the walls figured out. Like, in the office area, we're still going back and forth with, like, the in-school suspension. Should we have a bunch of little rooms or one big room that a person could sit in? And, and, and so there's some programmatic things that we are still working out, um, as we go through the different iterations of the plans, but.
Well, I think maybe one other thing of, might be of interest. So during the, when the construction starts, the day after school lets out most likely. So the, the entrance to the school will change. I know we've had quite a few discussions internally about it, but I don't know if we as a board have talked. But if you're coming in from the parking lot nearest, I don't know, I don't know, I guess the, the hill, the city park.
Over by the, by the gym.
Back corner, by the gym, that will become the new main entrance during construction. So they're gonna build a little foyer entrance into there. There's already a ticket window that's currently used for storage, so they'll be able to have um, someone in there, actually, for when people come in and need batched in or whatever. Uh, so there's already some infrastructure there, so they won't have to do a real complex build, but they will build a new entrance area that will allow us to stay secure and meet our different security requirements for that year and a half or whatever it's needed. And I think right now the projected schedule is through December, so it'd be a full school year and a half um, until the front is opened up, is currently the projected timeline. So that's all to, still to TBD, but that right now that's the best we have as far as a forecast, um, because that's gonna be a large chunk.
The, um, can I say this with the trauma that it brings to us, but when we did COVID and, um, we ended up doing video announcements of what we were doing and how we were doing it, we're gonna need some video announcements on how traffic's going to flow and where the parking's going to work and all that other stuff. So this summer's going to be uh, a lot of communication out to the public, as far as, you know, we need you to come in here, this is where you're gonna drop off your kids, and this is, you know, we'll have videos and diagrams and.
Is there something that you can do prior to school letting out? To let kids know that that's, like, so that you can let the kids know directly without just depending on parents to share that?
Yeah, and so pretty soon, everybody's going to, it's, it's becoming almost that time where uh, they start picking their parking spaces for next year.
Okay.
And so, um, that's gonna be the first step of it, because we're gonna wanna make sure that we control what side of town you live on as to where you're going to be, what parking lot would be the most advantageous for you.
I mean, we're talking like eighth graders, like, knowing, like, parents obviously are gonna be dropping off at that point, like, they can't drive. But, I mean, even for eighth graders, or, you know, current eighth graders that are going into freshman year to know and just have that idea of like, hey, we've seen all these years, kids go in to this store, but come, you know, fall of 2024, let's go, just so that they know. Obviously, parents are gonna have to know also, but maybe just to kind of.
That'll probably be part of freshman orientation.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm asking.
Which is normally when they, like, when, 'cause I have a freshman, so it was all brand new to me. So, tha- that is something that they did with us, you know, before school started, you know, with an incoming freshman, so I would expect that that would happen with them as well. But I do think it'd be good for the upperclassmen, the current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, even if it's just.
There are a.
Next year, it's gonna be different, 'cause they're not gonna pay attention over the summer.
Right.
So, but right now, a lot of, there are parents that have kids just in the middle school that park up where we're doing the new parking at the park, and they, their middle schooler walks through, you know, past the high school to get up there, and I don't know if that's gonna be a possibility, because of the construction, to be able to and, and so there's, um.
Well, the high school kids will have that parking lot full.
Right.
So.
And so it's, it's.
I mean, they'd have to park farther up into the park if they, to do that, because all that current space where they sit right now next to the batting cages, and there's maybe a half a dozen cars up there on any given day, right? So where the, where those folks sit, they're gonna, there's, that whole parking lot, I expect to be completely filled with high school kids that are parked there already, but you know, if it's seniors, then they may be gone by the last hour when somebody needs to come pick up their kids. So it, they'll just have to see what space is available there, but.
Yeah.
There's gonna be some changes to how it works, but that's, at least we have an alternative solution versus just saying, okay, only, we only have a hundred parking spaces for kids to use. We'll still have 200, close to the same number we have now, even during construction, so.
Well, we are starting to look at, um, flow of traffic as we're looking at where the office is gonna be, 'cause we've gotta have, um, all the fire codes and, 'cause there was an issue getting the kids out safely and emergency plans and all those things are, are in the works, so. Questions, concerns, comments about any of this? Alright.
Perfect. Move on to individual board member comments. You wouldn't have anything for the segment? Nope. Presence prerogative, I don't have anything as well. So that leads into our executive session. And we're gonna entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity according to 5 ILCS 120/2C1 and also be student disciplinary cases pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C9. Maybe like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll make a motion. I'll start into executive session.
Thank you, Andrea.
I'll second.
Please, seconds. Roll call, please.
Maureen Crager?
Yes.
Adam Hamkin?
Yes.
Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Kelly Moyer?
Yes.
Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Search?
Yes.
There are no action items as a result anticipated from our executive session, so you are welcome to rejoin us at the conclusion of that and watch us adjourn, so. We'll be back.
back.